...redistricting and number two, the Act 13 application guidelines. I know that Commissioner Agelston wanted to present the redistricting one. So if you don't mind, I'd like to start with the conversation about Act 13 and then proceed. If he's not here by then, then well. As a reminder, the meeting is being recorded today, just audio. So it's public information, anything that's said in these meetings. And we will be sticking to the agenda. There's no whole items for discussion, so we'll go ahead and start with the Act 13 application guidelines. Yeah?
There's a copy here for Jeff as well. This first document that I've given you is kind of a breakdown of the three different fees that the counties receive across the state. This impact fee also affects municipalities as well, so the 27 municipalities we have in the county receive the impact fee. But if you note down at the bottom, that's only in years when there is active unconventional wells in production in the county. The last program year, which would have been 2016, there were no active wells, so therefore the county, as well as the municipalities, did not receive any Act 13 funds. Now, the law is pretty clear in laying out what the use of the impact fee is. There are 13 potential uses, which I outlined on the page. And I apologize, I just brought copies for the commissioners. But you'll notice that I highlighted six, eight, and 11. For item number six, program years 11 through 13, that funding was channeled into tax reduction or homestead exclusions. Then, beginning in 14 and continuing through 15, that funding was deposited into the county's capital fund as a reserve, which was then earmarked for the records management, which would be the pictometry, the GIS system that the county is pursuing. The second page lays out the legacy funds. And these are the second two funds that the county receives. Now, only counties receive legacy funds, municipalities do not. There are two legacy funds that we receive. One is a check directly from PENDOT about July or August for the highway bridge improvement fund. And this is to fund only those locally owned, at-risk or deteriorated bridges. The counties across the state are all guaranteed $40,000 minimum annually from this fund. We have received a little bit more each year because we did have some active wells, but there's a formula that is used to base that amount per county on. The second fund is the environmental initiatives, sometimes referred to as the Greenway or open space fund. And that is, I've laid out what the Act 13 actually says the uses of the funds can go to. And that includes greenways, recreation trails, open space, natural areas, community conservation beautification projects, community heritage parks, water resource management. Each county across the state is guaranteed $25,000 annually from that fund. Again, these two funds here do not go to the townships or the boroughs, but the county is now pursuing a method of distributing this funding to our local municipalities or nonprofits as a way of delivering on some projects that either repair a structurally deficient bridge or improve a community's beautification or open space recreation, those kinds of things. Now, if you flip over to the backside, I left this highlighted under the application periods for the environmental initiatives because I wasn't sure what the commissioners would prefer to do as far as the timeline during the year. I think it's a wise decision to limit it to applications due in and decisions made within a specific timeframe, so that it's not an open year-round type of application because we don't have a whole lot of funding to work with. The bridge program, on the other hand, that could be a critical thing where if for some reason or another, we end up with a bridge that's structurally deficient and a repair needs or replacement needs to happen quickly, that would be my recommendation, open year-round for those kinds of activities. We have awarded some funding for three different projects that fall into the bridge program, and there are a number of other projects that have been awarded for the environmental initiatives. What I'm finding with a lot of counties is that most all of them open up a round, I guess for lack of a better term, a grant round between two different dates within the calendar year, application due and then a deadline for applications. And then those applications are screened and then awards made for the projects by the governing body, which in the case of the county would be the county commissioners. So as far as eligible applicants, my recommendation to you is for the bridge program, any municipality that owns a municipal-owned bridge. For the environmental initiatives or the Greenway, municipalities, authorities, or nonprofit organizations would be eligible for those. So then, the next section just talks a little bit about the evaluation of them and the awarding of the grants. But I'll get a little bit more into detail on some of the other handouts that I have for you. The second piece is the most current status of the funds through all three programs. Now, when I put this together, I did not have the theaters award noted on this one, so I've added that at the bottom, which now brings a balance of $124,000 plus interest.
Thank you for adding those up to the Act.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, the way I have presented it to you before, it could be a little unclear as to exactly which pots of money were for different uses. This, I think, does clarify it. But if you'll notice that in the 13 eligible uses funds, which would be the impact fee or that top page, all of that funding has been committed. It's either used for the tax reduction or the pictometry project, leaving us a zero balance. And again, we did not receive any funding last year to add to that pot. The legacy fund is in the middle column, and our balance, as I mentioned, was $124,427 plus some interest. And the bridge fund, we have a balance of $194,680 plus interest in that. I am aware of another potential application coming in for use of those funds, I believe from Pine Grove Township, but have not seen that application yet, so it will be coming.
Which one?
In the bridge, bridge fund. So this next document that I want to give to you is the program guidelines that I've come up with for the bridge program funding. And this one here is just a little bit of an overview of the program itself on page two. I'm not going to go through this piece by piece, I'll let you read through it at your leisure, but I just wanted to point out a few things. We are requiring that the bridge project be either a structurally deficient bridge or a weight-posted bridge. And it can be proven either through the inspection reports that Stifler-McGraw does for us for the 20-foot and longer bridges. If the bridge is municipally owned at less than that length and does not receive the biannual inspection, it's up to the municipality to get an inspection done through an authorized engineering firm to determine the condition. And then that information has to be provided to us. But the program could be used for paying for preliminary engineering, environmental clearance, right-of-way clearance, final design and construction, or any of those pieces. Now, we are also requiring that the applicant get all the necessary permits and clearances first before the project can start. And that would be any PENDO or diversity index analysis that needs done, any other permitting through DEP or the federal permits, or whatever would be applicable for that type of a job. We're actually, even though we're sort of calling it a grant, we're not really a grant. It's going to be treated more as a reimbursement back to the municipality. In other words, the municipalities incur the cost, and then we reimburse them for the amount of dollars that the county agreed to contribute to the project. So they have to provide for us receipts proving that they did incur these expenses on this particular project. The county would put in place a contract with them, laying out a timeline for the project to be completed. And then, we're also requesting that the project sponsor or the applicant provide a match in the form of 10% of the project cost. Now, it could be 10% cash, or it could be a half of that, or 5% in cash and the other 5% in in-kind on the part of the applicant. But I think it's good that there be some ownership into the project, or skin in the game, if you will, by the project applicants, and that does not be treated just as a handout from the county. That way, there's ownership in it. There would be a vetting process, which the county would receive the applications, and that's what I'm going to hand out to you next. And the staff and the planning department will go through and make sure that everything is there in a complete application. From there, all projects that this funding is used for have to be approved by PENDOT. So once we have the completed application, we would send it on down to District One, who would then forward it on to Central Office in Harrisburg, making sure that everything is in compliance with the intent of the Act. And if it is, the county could then make the decision to go ahead and fund whatever amount is agreed upon for funding the project. We would put a contract in place with the applicant, and then the planning office would be, I guess, the go-to department for invoices coming into us, comparing to the contract, making sure it's in compliance, and forwarding it on to fiscal for processing and the commissioners for authorization. The second legacy fund would be the environmental initiatives or the Greenway fund. And this one, the different types of entities that would be eligible for this one would be local governments, counties and municipalities, education institutions, conservation districts, and nonprofit organizations that are legally constituted 501(c)(3)es. And the project itself must be located within Warren County. And the types of projects that would be eligible would include acquisition for the purposes of greenways, recreation trails, open space preservation, or public parks, planning, design, engineering, construction for greenways, recreational trails, public parks, community beautification projects. Ineligible types of activities would include things like fundraising, public relations, communications, lobbying for fee for securing other financing. So it seems pretty clear in the intent of the legislation what the uses are, but there is a little bit of interpretation in some of the pieces of it. So that is why, in the past, I've made recommendations to consult a solicitor if there's question on a particular application. But the requirements of the applicant would be any permitting and so forth that would be required as part of the project. We want to make sure that the project, when it's finished, is ADA compliant, since there's funding going into there. There may be a situation where they would have to receive bids or quotes, depending on what the cost of the project is and the thresholds of the county and the municipalities. Prevailing wage act may come into the picture in some cases, it's just dependent on the time.
So prevailing wage applies to all state money, not county money? So if it came from our tax base, we would not be subject to it?
Right.
But since this is flowing through the state, we would, right?
Well, what I was thinking on that, Ben, is if there's a combination of funding sources that are going into a project. Say, for instance, there's a state grant for, let's say, $50,000. And then also adding this grant funding into the project too, we have to follow the regulations on prevailing wage because of the cost of the project.
Right. And so in a sense where we wouldn't need to force prevailing wage would be if part of the project is local funding?
Yeah. If the project is all local funding, then I don't think we have, but that was something that you should check with the solicitor.
He did before on another project, I'm pretty confident that that was the.
Okay. Recommendation I'm hearing from the commissioners is consider funding requests up to $25,000. Or is it $25,000 total that the commissioners want to distribute annually? We need some verification on that.
We work to bring in, what, $35,000 a year?
Well, it fluctuates. And I'll get to that in just a, well, as a matter of fact, it's one of the sheets that I gave you.
The minimum is 25, so I think we were saying that a minimum of 25 would then be passed.
On to projects.
To various projects. It could be a project that's $25,000.
Or 5, 5,000.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That's what I had assumed.
Okay.
Okay, the expenses that would be reimbursable would be materials and supplies, purchase or use of equipment, use of a consultant, and direct labor costs. Things that wouldn't be reimbursed would be projects related to costs incurred prior to the execution of a grant agreement. So applicants have to understand, don't start your project until you have the contracts in hand from the county. That's not unlike other grant programs across the state and feds. Costs that are not directly related to the approved scope of work would not be reimbursed. Administrative costs, operating costs such as rent utilities are not reimbursed, permitting fees, and hospitality. Now, what we're asking for here on a match would be for every dollar in program funds coming from the legacy fund, we would be requesting 50 cents in match. That could be in the form of cash, it could be in-kind services, it could be donated services and materials, or it could be volunteer services. In all the projects that we have seen this funding channeled to historically, there's always been an overabundance of match, mostly volunteers and in-kind services.
How do you value a volunteer's time?
Okay, on the page six, there's a website that I cite there. And that's where I'm using my figures.
Great.
Okay, so I laid this out as application periods from January 15 through March 1st. Now, we're already almost through January. Are you okay with continuing with that, or do you want to set up a difference at a deadline? I thought it would be fair for a 45-day application period.
I think that's fine. When Mr. Scully at our last meeting made the comment that there may be better at a different time of the year, so I'm willing to consider a different time of the year. But I think a 45-day or, you know, two months or whatever, somewhere in there ballpark annually makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. I think we should try to do it as close to the beginning of the year as possible because a lot of these projects would probably happen during the construction months, beginning about May.
Right.
So we should try and do it. You know, if you want to go like even February 1st to March 15th or.
Well, I think it's important to note that these funds are not meant to be emergency funds.
Right.
So that's why grant periods appropriate for it. You should have a prime project that you're dealing with.
One more, nevermind. Okay, go ahead. Okay, so this would be a two-year contract that would be executed between the county and the project sponsor. As far as the selection of projects go, let me give you the application first and then go through the scoring process for each of them. All right, on this application here, it's a little more lengthy than the bridge projects, but we're asking the applicant on page two to give us a clear and concise description of what the project is that they're doing. And then, based on some conversations that I've had with you folks concerning what kinds of things do we want to see in the application, would include page three, who the project's intended to benefit, how will it improve the community, who will be responsible for the ongoing maintenance of the project once it's completed, I think it's extremely important, and does it tie into a local or a regional plan in one way or another? And so, all those questions are asked to be answered. And then, the way that the projects would be vetted would be, the planning department would receive the applications and make sure that everything is complete. From that point on, it's referred on to the county's planning commission, who will then rank, evaluate, rank the different projects, and provide a list of projects to the commissioners for consideration for funding. The planning commission, whether a project is funded or not, would also notify the applicant as to whether or not they were successful, which is only fair. But I put together what I believe would be a fair questions to ask as part of the application scoring. So you'd have the project name at the top, the reviewer's name, which again would be the nine members of the planning commission individually. The project narrative, does it clearly describe the proposed project? If so, that's worth five points maximum. Does the project benefit the public in general, or is it more of a specific project geared towards a small group of individuals? And that would determine the number of points there. Does it have an economic impact on the community or the region? Does it have the potential to spur additional investment in the project area? Ongoing and future maintenance of the project is addressed by the applicant, that's worth 10 points. The project is noted in a planned document, such as a comprehensive plan, a Greenway plan, a site development plan, a feasibility study, et cetera, et cetera. And then, dealing with the match, is it in hand? If it is, that's worth a full 10 points. If it's committed with a letter of commitment by the matching agencies, it's worth five. If match is not indicated and it all is being secured, then it's zero points. And then, there's space for notations down or notes down there. With a total score possible of 50.
Perfect.
Okay?
Yep. Any questions, anything else?
I think you did exactly what we had wanted from the month.
Precisely.
The one thing that I'm concerned about this, and maybe it's in another area because I've skimmed through this, is I think that we should clarify community beautification projects. We had discussed that in our last board session, the idea of putting some parameters on that in order to avoid just kind of general, and I realize that like having a 501(c)(3) organization involved helps, but I think that we should make a point of stating that, you know, that it should be historic in nature, if it's a building, like the exterior is being refurbished.
I'd be fine with that, and it has to be on the historic register?
Register, that would make it easier.
A community beautification project too could even include things like planters, trees, and stuff like this. It's something to dress up the community, so it's kind of open-ended.
Well, I just, like, the issue that we got into before was the fact that that term is so broad. And I think that for the purpose of our grant process, we should narrow it in order to, you know, make it clear to people who are making the application.
I did all this to provide you with a starting point.
Okay.
And if there are things that you feel should be clarified, please let me know, but we needed to start somewhere.
Yeah, I think you've done a great job. That's exactly what I was hoping for. Yeah, to your point, if we wanted to narrow that down a little bit more, I would think that if it's going to an organization, if it's going towards a building, the building would have to be on the historic register. But you're right, if it's dressing up the outside, planting trees, that sort of thing, you know, that's entirely different.
Why don't we just throw, maybe we can throw some terms around and then get something that everybody's comfortable with.
So do the commissioners want to try to pass this at our next meeting?
Well, what I would ask of you in the meantime is to, if you would decide on the application period.
Yeah, right.
You know, like I said, I started with February, January 15.
All right. So we've already committed $5,000 this year, correct? So far this year, between the River Landing and the, but none has been distributed in the last couple of years, correct?
Yeah, the, well, you know, this is actually a typo here, and it should not say bike trail bridges, it should say bike trail benches. I don't know how that happened. That was also distributed in 2017.
Okay.
Cross bridges out and make that benches.
We still have $125,000. So do the commissioners want to go ahead and solicit applications for 2018 up to $25,000?
Yeah, there were two on here that are earmarked, and I did note that, Western Pennsylvania Conservancy with the Broken Straut Creek watershed improvements. And that is dependent on whether or not they get the DCNR grant that they have applied for. I've not heard one way or the other on that yet. The River Landing project is earmarked at $15,000. But that bottom number that I have down at $124, that includes everything that's either been distributed or earmarked. So it's, outside of the interest, it's a good solid number. And then, the same thing with the bridges.
So the question is, are you too comfortable withdrawing it down in 2017 to $100,000, and that being kind of our baseline?
I'm not sure what you mean. I mean, I would just say that the rest of the funds are available for our discretion.
What I'm asking is, we've already spent some $35,000 this year. In some sense, we've been taking it from years past since we've been building into this fund. There is $125,000 roughly. Are you interested in opening an application process, January 15th, well, it's already passed, February 1st, March 30th, or whatever, of 2018, and distributing an additional $25,000 in the calendar year of 2018?
I would be fine with that after we pass this at a meeting.
Right. Commissioner Morrison?
Like we're having a grant period in 2018, that's what I'm trying to mean.
Is there any wisdom in keeping the funds at $100,000?
Well, I've thought about that. And the county does have some recreation amenities, the bike trail being one of them. There's been discussions over extending it further north. One of our sources is PENDOT, and there's another source through DCNR. But again, there is match obligations on the part of those agencies. And to be honest with you, I think keeping it at 100 for right now would be a wise move.
Okay. And I think everyone's in agreement with keeping it at 100. The question is, do we need to keep it 125?
I'm fine with keeping it at 100.
Okay.
But I would like to ask Mr. Scully, I know that you had made some comments at our last meeting in regard to the time period for applications. Is there something that you'd like to say now?
I'd like to see it extended because based on, I mean, it's, you know, it was our roof that I put the application in for. There'll be nothing done till the weather is sure to be warm, and that will be probably around the first of May before that project would start at the earliest. And again, I'm looking at other townships, and maybe they won't know till February or March that they have a problem that they have to blacken grants. I'd like to see it extended a little longer, not in the winter months, because very few people walk on their roof, if, for instance, in the middle of winter, and they don't notice their major problems until the snow on a flat roof melts. So I'd like to see it extended to March or April, because that's where most people, most municipalities, check their buildings, roofs, like we did. And we had to catch ours in September, and we went out to get bids for it. And that's managed from a contractor, that's how we need to know. Yeah, I'd like to see the application dates extended a little bit. But again, that's up to you.
Although I'm not sure roofs are included in this funding, so.
I think they should be.
Well, we're going, Joe, by the language in the.
I understand, I read it. I understand the.
Now, there are, I did find some cases where Act 13 funds were used for a municipal building, but that's that first impact fee that I talked about with the very. But that's that first impact fee that I talked about at the very beginning. There are some municipalities east of here and south of here who got several hundred thousand dollars at the municipal level. And that funding can be used for, um, the, uh, the public buildings, for the, yeah...
I just wanted to be clear that this is not a beautification of Clay Township's office. It's a repair of the roof, which requires some brickwork because of the roof affecting the brickwork behind the wall that you don't see.
Yeah.
That's why in my application, I mentioned that there would be brickwork done because of what they have to do to repair the flat roof. It would be badly stripped down. And, well, I gave you a step-by-step analysis of what the contractors say should be done and has to be done.
I, you know, I do want you to note too that we are actively looking for other sources of funding.
Well, I understand that, and you do an excellent job to help me and help us. I will tell you that in the public meeting. Again, you're a fool if you're Dan Godsmann.
Thank you, Joe.
Any other commissioner comments about this?
Thank you for the compliment.
I've worked with you a lot, Dan, I know what you're doing.
There has been, before you leave the topic, there has been a question about Act 13 funds for plugging oil, abandoned oil and gas wells. Um, that, that's not coming through any of these funds that I just covered, but there is a program through the state that you can apply for funding for, at $13, for that specific type of activity. There is an application guidelines, I think I have forwarded it on up to you folks, but I have not checked into it to see how involved it is, or whether there's a match or anything like that.
I don't know if I got that.
I can forward that up to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I thought I had to send it to all three of you.
Maybe you did, and I overlooked it.
Yeah, I have a question, Dan, to plug in the wells. What if people plug their wells without any notification to the proper authority? Is there any rules that they have to tie in to plug them?
Uh, that's a good DEP question. Because I, you have to get a permit through the Department of Environmental Protection.
Do you know as well, whether in this county, there are people that don't get a permit?
Now, with water wells, Joe, that's probably something different. Oil and gas, yeah.
Yeah, they're supposed to get permits. Well, the League of Women Voters has been very kind to wait, so let's, um...
Thank you, Dan.
Let's move on to the next topic. But it sounds like we're going to go ahead and do 25,000 application process this year. We want to make that, what, March 15th through April 1st?
That sounds fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Mr. Abrams?
Can I just ask a few questions first? One, I didn't hear in the list of projects, watershed projects. Maybe I just missed that while looking at the list. I think that was just a oversight, maybe it was that someone mentioned.
No, it's the, yeah, in the environmental, Greenway.
Okay. And, um, I'm just wondering, I heard economic value as being one of the scoring methods or one of the scoring components, but I didn't hear environmental values. There are all kinds of reasons why we were going to watershed projects that may not have a very obvious economic benefit to the community, but they have a lot of other benefits. And we hope those get included as well.
We can add that. I guess you could separate, you know, type of project, environmental versus economic.
And then, the other thing was, I didn't hear specifically the idea that planning could be included as a project with regard to watersheds in particular in the county. It could be.
Yeah, it's, it's right there, it's the first one.
Perfect, right. And just very quickly, if I could, I don't know what you've seen this report or not. This is the 10th annual WINS report published maybe a few months ago. I gave that to you like, kind of, to Dan, like, when you were going to hear the drawing.
Yeah, um, maybe it was the, I'm getting that from four, it's there. Nate, yeah.
He got you one?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's just, uh...
Oh, you have one, I mean, yeah.
The reason it's valuable and relevant to this conversation is because there is a great deal of work in, in watersheds that the county mayor may not be involved in or even aware of. There's a lot of nonprofit presence, there's a lot of municipalities that are doing work. And this gives you some idea of what's happened. Over 50,000 hours of volunteer time, for example, from 7,000 volunteers over the tenure period of this coalition. And that's really not even a total collection of the volunteer time that's, that's been contributed. That's why this kind of money could be very, very helpful to, uh, to those organizations that have really good projects in mind, that just haven't been able to find funding from other sources. Anyway, I'm here to advocate for watersheds. And if you want to take a look at that or discuss that with me at any time, I'd really enjoy doing that. By the way, there are a lot of economic benefits to watershed improvement. Those are listed, and I think spelled out pretty well in that report.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on the resolution, excuse me, the Act 13 application? All right, then we'll turn on...
If not, I'm headed back.
Okay, thank you very much, and fine work.
Thanks.
Resolution supporting redistricting. Phyllis, did you want to kick us off?
Okay.
Feel free to come and sit here if you want.
I have with me our President Susan Swab of the League of Women Voters of Warren County, and Secretary Jennifer List, and also a program person, and also Susan Stout, which is with part of the study committee for this redistricting. In October, we were here with a resolution in support of Citizens Commission for Legislative and Congressional Redistricting. And so, we're here for a follow-up on that, hoping that the commissioners would be willing to support a resolution for an independent committee, I'll call it a commission, where there would be four from the major party, four from, I refer to it as the minor party, and four from other parties that would be on a commission to do the redistricting in Pennsylvania. This is the legislative district. And there's a little bit of confusion right now because the Pennsylvania Supreme Court just made a decision that the congressional districting would be done, and that's this map here. But what we are worrying about, fighting for, and I do mean that, is to have the Pennsylvania districts realigned so that it's fair and equal opportunity for citizens to vote. So, this is the Pennsylvania district that we have, which you can get on the internet any way you'd like, through fairdistrictsp.com, leagueofwomenvoters.com, or you could also get it off any of the census materials that's available. So, that's the difference. The League is still asking for a commission for legislative and congressional redistricting in Pennsylvania. There's been some nice changes. We have had our, uh, House representatives, there's now 102 co-sponsors. That means it's a simple majority. The Senate has 16 co-sponsors, that's a nice increase. And then, as far as municipalities and townships, there are 13 counties, 160 municipal resolutions, and nearly 200 currently in process. And Warren County would be currently in process because we're hoping that you folks would support such a commission. Uh, there's many other facts, but I'll just, I left a packet the last time, and so I'll just let it be that way. So, if you have any questions, we'd be willing to answer anything and hope that you'll support this resolution.
If I could ask, like, when you look at these maps, what do you find to be unfair? I mean, I can certainly understand when you're talking about congressional district down by Philadelphia that kind of worms its way. I get that, but up here, what's the issue?
Well, you can see here with the House, how some of them get into the Crawford Erie. And what we find is the big data process of today. They can focus to where the legislature's support systems are. And that allows them a better chance of being elected. And that's what's bothering, that the persons, the citizens don't have that opportunity to vote from whomever they want to.
Prior to those maps being, the example was spelled English as district, that had a little finger that would go down and wrap around the city of Warren. And I always thought that was kind of odd that he represented a good chunk of Erie and then just the city of Warren, the region within Warren.
Another aspect that the League has found, that those who would like to become more involved into their House or Senate work are not finding that they have a fair chance of, of being elected because the, the drawing of the maps make it so that they are not as, no, I guess it's the board on the foot. And I'll ask if anyone else has any other comments they'd like to...
So, it's not necessarily in an individual district to which we're objecting, and so are the lines. It's the process of drawing them. The way the process is set up under the Pennsylvania Constitution now, the party in power at the time that district lines are drawn. Given the mix of that power, the current process and modern technology has tremendous power to influence and favor candidates of their choice, not just a party, but candidates. So, as I've thought about this, I've thought about the thing that motivates people to seek public offices, often public service. But when they go to a state office or a federal office, they find that to be effective in that office, they must balance the needs of their constituents with the organizing principle and power of the party to which they belong. And our belief is that as technology has created really incredible power in that redistricting, it really almost forces the alignment of the best possible motivated candidate. Almost, you know, that whole frog in boiling water thing, right? All of a sudden, you find that you really have to be obedient to the party in order to get anything done when there's a conflict between your constituents and your party. And for me, from a local experience perspective, the best examples of that are the budget impasses and the burdens they have imposed on counties and school districts over the last three or four years. So, it, it's easy to sort of think this is just for Republican or Democrat. And there's certainly that. The state of Maryland, it's the Democrats who draw the lines, and they have an almost outskewed system as Pennsylvania. But it's really more this process, the balance between the voice of the constituent and the power of the party. And a process that took redistricting and distributed it more fairly across the parties would allow that balance to be reestablished in a way that favored the constituents more.
I see. So, how operationally, I guess I understand your problem. But when it comes to the solution, the solution is to have politicians appoint independent citizens who are going to be political. I mean, there's no way that we can check our politics at the door, particularly when you're going to tick four Republicans and four Democrats, which inherently will keep, you know, keep on the fight of the, the two majority parties rather than letting independent voices be heard.
But those four representatives either of other parties or completely independent people, and the fact that it's balanced rather than cast by the most recent election, reestablishes the need for multi-partisan, not even bipartisan, but reestablishes the need for multi-partisan solutions. And of course, it can be ugly, but I think the proposed amendments in Senate Bill, is it 172? I forget what the, anyway, the Senate's...
172, yeah.
Um, would really reestablish, I think, the, the balance. And then, when you add to that the recent court decision, you really can tell that software draw contiguous boundaries with a certain number of people in them and don't pay any attention to voter registration.
Right. So, we currently have people, voters, who are expressing their opinion when they elect people to office. Same thing when you have the courts, which are then supposed to inherently check the legislature, as they're doing arguably with the congressional. So, what's wrong with the inherent system since it sounds like what your issue is, is that there's gerrymandering. Then the Supreme Court said, whoa, 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 there's gerrymandering, legislature, go fix it. And, you know, they have this sniff test, which I perused, and it actually looks kind of decent. So, the Supreme Court's doing its job. How would this do a better job than the Supreme Court?
It would, it would, I think, make it unnecessary to go through the courts or necessary much less frequently to go through the courts if you created a more balanced political process.
And this is to change the Constitution so that it will have this process as opposed to just every election system time that would become a subject.
Right.
Um, there are a couple of things that wanted to add. So, currently, the process is a belatedly partisan process. I think that's the bigger issue. Whether it's the state legislature or the courts, it's partisan. So, like I, you know, as a Democrat, I'm going to advocate to get Democratic judges in place in order to do what I believe is going to be, you know, democratic things. You know, for instance, messing with the map. You know, people elect people with the idea that they're going to, as legislators, try to draw a map that's going to give them dominance over the system. Neither of those are done in the best interest of the public. I mean, they're not objective. And so, regardless of whether it's the legislature or the courts, it's a partisan perspective that they're taking. And the idea of having a broader, like, independent, purposefully independent commission, I think, is a much better, so, um, and I'll give you an example. As far as, I don't think that it's perfect because there is no perfect system because people are involved. But if you set the precedent of trying to state that it has to be independent and it's done from the perspective of being independent, it's much easier to get independent, independent mindful people on that commission. You know, whereas right now, like, I've heard the argument of, well, people are electing a legislature in order to draw the map, and I don't believe that to be true. I think that if you polled all the people that walked into the poll booth in 2010 or 2000, well, in 2010, and said, are you here to draw a map for the next 10 years to give the Republican Party or whatever party dominance over the political system? I doubt they would say that. They would probably say, I hate Obamacare, that's why I'm voting. Like, um, so, to conflate, like, people's intentions in the voting booth to giving a particular party dominance for 10 years, I just don't agree with it. Say hypothetically, the Republican Party, you know, blows the economy up in Pennsylvania, and all of a sudden, nobody likes Republicans. Do you really think people are going to walk into a voting booth just to give the Democrats dominance for 10 years over the political system by drawing maps? I think that's something to be considered in this debate, is the partisan nature of it. The other thing is, is it doesn't, it, because it's written by Democrats or Republicans, either way, it completely alienates independent voters. I mean, those maps are not drawn to include any kind of an independent voice in them at all. I mean, and I say that as a Democrat, as a proud Democrat. You know, with the rules that they are set today, if you put me in charge of it just like anybody else, I would draw the map in order to make it democratic as possible. That's just a fact. Anybody that's trying to gain and retain power is going to do that. The other thing I wanted to say is, um, because of the nature of the maps, I think there are a lot of, you know, tertiary issues that nobody ever discusses. Like, for instance, the fact that less people run for these offices because the more one-sided you can make a district, the more, the harder it is to challenge somebody, the less people are willing to run against them. And that's Democrat and Republican. I've talked to people who are Republicans in Philadelphia who just have given up on running for anything because those, the way the maps are drawn. And it's important to note that there are Democrats that go along with these maps being drawn because they know their district's going to be safe. You know, it's not necessarily a, oh, the Republicans are trying to dominate the system. I mean, there are Democrats in Harrisburg that are just as willing to draw a crooked map for themselves as anybody else. Um, you know, and I think another thing is, is because of the maps being so messed up and changing every 10 years, I mean, I personally think that part of the commission's effort should be to keep the maps as stable as possible. People don't know who their representative is. People don't know who their representative is, and if you draw, you draw a map that's where the district's, you know, a big crescent shape, and it takes up massive amounts of space, I mean, those representatives do not hit all of those houses or hit, you know, hit all of those communities. They do not get to see the representative. It's just a very bad process, in my opinion, and that's why, you know, I've supported this initiative. You know, and I think that it's something that's at least worth having a conversation about.
There's also proof in the southeast especially, and some of the southwest part of Pennsylvania, that the maps favor those who make big donations to whatever party, whether it's the Democrat Party or the Republican Party. So it is also drawn to be able to get the person to vote for my cause with my money, and it's been brought up pretty much with several of the issues in Pennsylvania that's very scary too. And if you would come with us to our voter registration time, especially in the schools, you get these questions over and over, and they can understand why the primary is only for two parties and so forth. So there's many other aspects that once this commission is developed, some of the other situations can begin to come forth and be used as ways of making a fair voting process in Pennsylvania. And we're on a time limit in the, in 2019, '20, both houses, or before, 2019 or '20, both houses must have this passed twice in consecutive sessions. With our census being drawn in 2020, we want to be ready so that when the census is dropped, as we know, the Pennsylvania population's going to greatly change. And it kind of scares us for the rural areas there, what could happen with our population decrease. So we want to be sure to be ready for this to be passed. And that's why the resolution is very important to us, is to get it onto the tables at the Pennsylvania Senate and House so that we can get this movement. Thank you for your time. If there's any other questions, we would be happy to answer them.
As little women voters, are you trying to get the independent, registered independent, to be able to vote for primaries?
Not.
If you check the youth in this county alone, a lot of them don't want to be Democrat, and they don't want to be Republican. They want to be independent. As far as some people say, the youth doesn't know what they're talking about.
Oh, they just are no party.
They're no party. We have to get, well, when the primary comes, I don't care if you're Democrat, Republican, independent, or no party, like Lisa said, youth still have that individual who wants to vote, and when you tell them, we can't, or she can't vote, they're going to say, forget the general election, you all want to vote in the primary, I don't want nothing to do with you. We have to get the youth in this state to have the right to vote as well as you do and I do because you vote for large or a political party.
This commission, as it is now, does not address that. But yes, the League has addressed that issue in other situations, and there's many other situations too for fair voting, but this particular resolution does not address that.
Because sitting at that table was three commissioners, and they both won fairly good. But if they'd had the independents in the primary, a few of them might not be in office, and they know as well as I. And when I ran, I could have been beaten in my township from independents. I didn't, but there was a, all the independents in my township didn't have a chance to vote. We have to be able to let the independent and everybody else have the right to vote if they're all going to vote.
Lisa knows all the parties that we get on our registration form that maybe sometimes we aren't even aware of, that they are legal parties, so, yes, but that's another step.
I'd like to just state that I totally disagree with that for a number of reasons. I don't particularly like primaries, like, just generally speaking, I think the setup definitely needs reform, that's true. But for people who work in those parties, they spend a lot of time trying to recruit candidates, get people lined up to run. There's an enormous amount of work done for that, money spent, everything. And to have a handful of people that do no work, don't care about the party, and don't do anything, just to sabotage it in the primary, I don't think that's fair. You know, and then you also open it up to the other party term to sabotage primaries. You know, the parties, you love them or hate them, they do a lot of work in order to get people to run for office. I mean, it's just not fair to have, you know. I think that the good, the better argument is to say that there has to be a process to make it easier for independents to run for office. The problem right now is, is very hard for independents to run for office. That's the bigger problem than the primary vote. My other, my biggest problem with the primaries, the fact that the taxpayers pay for it and you elect two parties, it's not fair. Like, that's a whole nother discussion though.
But you have to, you let the independent have something to say in the state office, if it's the primary or the general election. There are independents, I had a neighbor for years who was independent, and because he couldn't vote in the primary, he very seldom voted in the general election, but he knew a lot about the politics. We have to get the independent where they have a say.
I would make the argument that, and not to draw this thing out, that the whole reason the primary process was started is because people didn't feel that the party system was fair. The party picked their candidate. Like, they had to, you had to go down to a hall meeting, everybody had to be a registered member, and they had to cast their vote in that hall. You had to be a precinct member and everything else. There was a lot more involvement in politics at that time when they did that process, and you had to work your way through the party in order to even become a candidate. Okay? When they changed to the primary system, it was to open the whole thing up because they didn't feel like it was fair that the parties picked their own people. And so that's why people were allowed to vote in the primary. And I would make the case that attendance at political events, interest in politics declined when the party's primary system started because you didn't have to be involved in anything to vote in the primary.
But you're saying, Jeff, that the good old boys picked the candidate.
They picked some good candidates.
Right. Some good candidates, and I have no offense to you, Drew, but again, you said the Democrats and the Republicans picked their candidate, but you forgot, I as an independent had no say in who ran. That's what I'm getting. We have to let the independents have a say. They can vote for a Republican or a Democrat or an individual running independently, but they have a say, and we have to get them involved because there's not much involvement with the youth because the majority of them want to vote independent.
As a public record, I'd like to give Lisa kudos because she works as one of our arms in going out with registration, with the phone calls that we make to her, what do you think about this, is this part, and so forth, so forth. So really appreciate the work here in the courthouse, and especially to Lisa, in making this a fair, a fair election process.
Very good. Thank you.
I do encourage the kids or even the adults that come in, or those coming in or register, that they do have the option to change their party before a primary, say they like a Democratic person to change their party to Democrat, so they are able to vote in the primary. And then I always tell them that, you know, it's their complete right to change back to independent once the primary is over. You know, I do, you know, put that information out as.
Oh, I realize you do this.
Yeah.
There are so many of them that want to be independent and don't want to be tied to the Democrat or the Republican Party. They want to be able to vote as an independent in the primary and the general election. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay. Mr. Morrison, did you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you, Phil, for coming here again and asking us to do this again.
We'll go ahead and cut the debate short then on this, but is the majority of the board interested in voting on this the next meeting?
That would be.
You are? Are you interested?
It doesn't matter one way or another. I mean, I honestly don't think that the legislature is going to take this up, but it's my thought.
Okay. Then I guess we'll bring you up to the next meeting.
That would be the Wednesday meeting?
Yeah, not this current one, I'll say, but the following one.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Next on the agenda is public comments, since we are already over on our time, let's keep.
Well, I'd just like to say one thing. You guys are second to John Abel in the number of times he's shown up, so good for you. Actually, I should say you're third.
Yes.
John, he's after you, you know. Back there, right next to you, she's going to get you.
We appreciate the effort.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Yeah, so anyway, we're over our time. We'll open up to public comments. Please keep your comments to, say, under five minutes, so that everyone can have a chance to wish a public comment. Mr. Abel?
No real comment, but could I get a copy of the documents that Dan prepared for the Act 13 one? Is there a email to this?
A mail, please.
Yeah.
There may be some changes made to them though, so maybe we should wait until we have the final document.
So long as we have a little time for our two documents.
Here. I didn't write up these two now.
Great. Thank you very much.
Salva?
I have one comment, just a reminder to the commissioners, since I'm no longer here, but I still do have an interest in the finances and what's going on with this county. I just want to remind all the commissioners that individually, I have to talk to each of you towards the end of last year, asking you to consider a recommendation to pay off the last bond debt that the county has. There is money in the bond debt reserve account. I'm not sure what the balance is that's in there, but there's not enough to pay that off, but between that and utilizing some of the money that's in the Erie Reserve account, there would be enough to retire that. That's an interest rate of 2.4 percent. You've got three semi-annual payments of interest left on of $8,100, and you pay a $750 annual fee for just having Mellon Bank hold the bond, so it's going to be over $25,000 that would be saved. That money is not going to make, or the portion of money that it would take out of Erie Bank is not going to make close to that much, less than probably one-tenth of that. I just think it would be in the county's best interest money-wise to move that. The money would be replaced back into the Erie Bank account, and its taxes are collected this fall, will probably all replace this fall. If not, it would be made up by the taxes that come in in the spring. But I just didn't want you to forget about bringing that up for consideration.
Is that something that we need to decide in the very near future?
Yes, because you pay interest daily, and it's $44.38 a day that's costing you an interest every time, every day you delay making this decision to do that. And also, there's a call period too, so once Mellon Bank is contacted, they have to put the call for this out there for so many days.
And what was the interest that you felt we could save if we paid that?
The interest itself is going to be $24,300 that you'll end up paying on it, and then, like I said, there are additional fees.
Okay.
Now, you will forego the interest that the money would make in the savings account, but it's not going to be close to that. And last year, you did use some of those Erie Bank funds in place of a tax anticipation note. However, the interest on your tax anticipation note is just over 1 percent, and this one's 2.4, so it's still beneficial to go this way.
Okay. Thank you, Julie.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment? Commissioner's schedule, I think I'm around the entire week, and that's going to be a pretty long week, except for the Northwest Commission meeting on Friday, so I won't be here at all on Friday. We'll review the meeting agenda, next meeting, department committee updates.
I'll be in Harrisburg Thursday and Friday. Yeah, Thursday and Friday.
Okay. Any projects that we have to update on, each other on right now?
Last one.
You can't wait?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Morrison. Phil, do you look like you have a question?
No.
Okay. Very good. Then we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you all for coming.